Order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We do have all members present and I declare quorum. This evening, we have Chrisalyn Nance, a fifth grader from Rockland Woods Elementary, who's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Chrisalyn?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello, Chrisalyn.
Hi.
When we were chatting before the start of the meeting, your mom shared with me that you like to sing?
Yes, I do.
And dance?
Yes.
And act?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, and thinking ahead, have you thought of a career, or is this too early for you to be thinking in those terms?
I think I want to be an actress, or a police officer, or a teacher.
Ah, well, those are three great possibilities. Would you like to share with us this evening, a little bit about your days at Rockland?
Um, my teacher's name is Miss Kiefer, and my favorite subject at Rockland would probably be reading. She makes, my teacher makes everything fun, and we never have a dull moment with her.
That sounds great, that sounds great. Uh, Chrisalyn, do you have some folks here with you this evening that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, my dad, my mom, my sister.
And do you have someone with you from the school?
Um, my principal and my vice principal.
And that's Mrs. Fuss, your principal?
And Mr. Funkhouser is my vice principal.
Well, thank you all for being here in support of Chrisalyn and for bringing her over. Colleagues, you have any questions that you'd like to ask?
What do you like to read? What's your best, like fiction, non-fiction?
I do enjoy fiction, mystery books, adventure books, around that range of things.
How about pets? Do you have any pets at home?
No, no pets.
Are you looking forward to middle school?
Yes.
And with just the few days left in the school year, are you looking forward to summer?
Not really.
Not really? So you'd rather be in school?
Yes.
Well, we thank you for being here, for leading us in the pledge in the moment of silence, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our first agenda item is to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher, any discussion? All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, okay, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs. Brings us to approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move to for approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Pickford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray, are there any additions or corrections? No, all those in favor? Okay, six, student member concurring and one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Gessford abstains.
Madam President, I move for approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray, any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor of approval? Six, and one abstention.
Madam President, I move for approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher, any additions or corrections to those minutes? All those in favor? Six, and the student member concurs, and one abstention, Mr. Gessford. Is that it? Okay, thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Tonight, we're very excited to continue with our award celebration, not only of our students' success, but also some of our teachers' success, and we're excited to share in that. So it's been a big spring for our athletes, we have a number of teams and individuals that have won state competition. In a little bit, I'll invite Eric Michael to come up and introduce our guests that are with us this evening. Also, Mike Cahanek will introduce our National Board certified teachers. We've had a whole cohort work together to get through the National Board rigorous process, and we're honored tonight to recognize them. And we'll start with Cody Pine, although I'm not sure our recipient is here. We had a young lady, and I'm gonna introduce her by way of video right now, and if she doesn't make it, she might make it later in the program. Tonight, she's graduating from Tech High, Kayla Kelly, but we'll introduce her by way of video right now, and if she makes it at some point in our program, we'll stop and honor her. But right now, we're gonna start with her video.
Hi, my name is Kayla Kelly. I'm currently a senior in the automotive technology program at Washington County Technical High School. Automotive was a big part of my life growing up, and it still is now. I grew up learning how to work on cars, light duty trucks, dump trucks, heavy machinery, agriculture equipment. I got a lot of experience from that, and being able to do that really pushed me to wanna be in the automotive industry. At first, I didn't know what I wanted to do, but then I discovered that I wanted to be a diesel technician. My dream is to be a diesel technician. And when I got into this class, I was ecstatic. I was ready to learn, I was ready to get down, get dirty, and get things done. This class is really giving me a jumpstart into my future, because we learn the things we don't know how to do, and then we apply it in the shop. These are things that we take with us, and, you know, that's, that's really cool. We just took our A S E exams, and I offered to take all nine on the first try. Although I didn't pass all nine, I passed six out of the nine, and the other three I only missed by a few points, which, for me, that's pretty good. I take these exams, and, you know, that shows my experience. Being young and going into this industry is really, really important, and most people don't understand that, because we're young and we know the things that other people, like the older people, don't. And we don't have to be recertified, we learn that stuff now. And being able to do those things that other people cannot do is so key to striving in our future.
And I see that Kayla has made it, and at this time, I'd like to ask the board to go down front, and we'll honor her, as well as we'll follow up then with Eric Michael with our state championships, and then Mike Cahanek.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. As the board members come down front, I would like to just read a small excerpt of the notification letter that Kayla received. It says, "Congratulations. I'm extremely excited to announce that the video submitted by the student at Washington County Technical High School has been selected as one of winning entries for the Lincoln Tech Matco High School Video Contest and Toolbox Giveaway. This video captured the essence of how valuable a hands-on technical education can be to a student with the ability and desire to succeed in the automotive industry. As a winning entry, the student will receive a Matco Toolbox along with a starter set of Matco Tools valued at just over $1,700. In addition, the school will also be awarded a professional-grade Matco Master workstation and tool storage unit valued at over $21,000." Board members, Dr. Michael, I'd like to present you Kayla Kelly.
Okay, we've had a very successful spring, as you're about to see, we have a number of athletes and a number of teams we're gonna bring in, so, and as I introduce them, athletes, you guys will come up, get your, get your medals, and then if you would, just kind of following along the wall, and then after we introduce Clear Spring, we'll bring them back up for a picture, correct? Okay, so Clear Spring Unified Track Team, they were Division II champions this year of the state of Maryland, so you guys wanna stand up and come up this way? First athlete is Abigail Angles. Rachel Corwell. Anna Crowe. Dylan Eby. Alexis Reed. Jordan Scardina. Jaden Suter. And assistant coach Sharon Rubek. And head coach Aaron Waidel. Next up, we have South Hagerstown Unified Track Team, they were the Division I champions for the state of Maryland this year. First athlete, Zuriel Plunkett. Zuriel. Joe Mullow. Tyrese Simkins. Skylar Jenkins. Matt Wagner. Lorraine Paul. Sean Pagar. Pagar. Steven Morales. Assistant coach Kat Kendrdine. And head coach Elizabeth Grimes.
All right, good looking person, guys, right here on three, good smile.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, next up, we have South Hagerstown Boys Track Team, they were the 3A state champions, first time in school history for a state championship in track and field. What we're gonna do is we're gonna introduce a team, and then we also had some individual winners, so we'll bring them back up a second time to recognize them for their individual feats. Andre Turey. Nate Moore. Kathan McDonald. Khalil Booker. Charlie Houston. Larry Barnes. Avery Aldridge. Eric McDonald. Gasu Colaby. Okay, assistant coach, Adam Rudy. Assistant coach, Aaron Kelly. Head coach, Dwayne Freeman. While they're finishing up pictures, just wanna mention, as I said, this is the first time in school history, they won the 3A State Trac, Track and Field Championship. I'd also like to recognize Coach Freeman was an athlete, and now has returned as a head coach for South Hagerstown, quite an accomplishment for him, I'm sure. And we talk about these guys being student athletes, proud to announce that these guys have a 3.04 team GPA. We're gonna circle Andre, Nate, and Kathan back around. Okay, it said, uh, these three individuals scored quite a number of points, winning several events at the 3A. Quite an accomplishment, you take three athletes and score so many points. So individually, Andre, you probably read about him in the paper, he just completed, competed at Bahamas, so on a national scene, he set our county records, and at this point, probably gonna set many more records as a junior, but Andre is the outdoor 110 high hurdle champion. All right, the next two individuals, if you've been reading the paper, both of them are going to Maryland together, participating in track, they kind of take turns winning. They compete against each other, which is a friendly rivalry, but, and they both got championships this year at the state, so which is, which is nice. Uh, Kathan, Kathan was the long jump champion this year for 3A, congratulations. If my memory serves me right, indoor champion, high jump, right? So it said they take turns, so in outdoor, Nate wins the high jump championship. Nate was a two-time state champion, Nate was the high jump champion this year for 3A, as well as the triple jump champion, congratulations. Okay, another individual we had, and not a stranger to state championships for track this year, Michaela Quan, Michaela was the shot put champion for 2A, as well as the discus champion, and in both events set a PR, if I'm not correct, right? So congratulations, two-time 2A champion. And then do we have the Boonsboro Track, Track athletes here? Think we still have more maybe coming, possibly, okay. So we have a couple here, Boonsboro Girls, four-by-800-meter relay, won the 1A state championship, we have some of their athletes here today. First with us, Ellie Bear. And Ainsley Plumbador. As I said, these girls have done a lot of winning over the last couple of years, and again, they were four-by-800-meter relay champions for 1A. On the boys' side, we also had a few state champions for Boonsboro High School, their four-by-800-meter relay team also won, and with us today from that team is Henry Schmidt. And we have with us as well Donovan McClellan, Donovan was the anchor, was the run, ran on the four-by-800-meter relay team, and Donovan was also the 800-meter run champion. Also, as we look at this, we have a ton of kids, those kids did a great job of South High jumping, and we'd like to acknowledge their jump coach is also here today with us. So just kind of recognize her. Okay, before we do the baseball team, this is a leftover, I shouldn't say call him a leftover. We did our winner champions this year. Aaron was already at the Olympic Training Center. Those who don't know, Aaron Brooks is a wrestler from North Hickerson High School. He was the 3A, 4A state champion this year. He has a laundry list of accomplishments. He's going to move on and do bigger and better things, and I've got, I'm just gonna quickly kind of just kind of brush over some of these things, but he's a four-time Washington County Champion, four-time regional champion, four-time state champion, which is only the seventh in the state of Maryland history to be a state champion. We've also, he's a two-time Hub Cup Champion, okay? And I'm just gonna, because there's a lot of stuff here that I, that I, you know, he's been a national champion, all right, several years. He, he's a freestyle national champion, he was named outstanding wrestler in his division, he's earned a spot on the USA Junior National Team, he's gonna compete in August in the Pan Am Games, and I think we remember from last year, he's a world champion, he's gonna go back in September to defeat, defend that title as well. Aaron Brooks, wrestler from North Hickerson High School. As Mr. Prue wants to, he's a future Nittany Lion as well. I believe, Aaron, you're going to hit it back to Olympic Training Center?
Yeah, soon.
Soon. Okay, I think we do have our seniors with Boonsboro Baseball Team. So this is, this is sort of some nice, I think probably sweet revenge this year. They were state, they were at state finals last year, lost to St. Michael's, returned this year to the state championship, beat St. Michael's in extra innings after St. Michael's had a big, had a three-run lead, is that right? Guys, I believe, three-run lead, they come back, tied it up, went into extra innings and won it. So they are your 1A State Champions for this year. And just kind of, before I introduce them, how tough this division is, they, we play in a CMC Central Maryland Conference, and we're District One, which is Carroll County West. We had 1A, 2A, and 3A State Champions from this district, and two of them are from our conference, and these guys competed in them, so it was a very tough conference, and they did a great job this year. And they were in the CMC Conference Championship Game as well this year. So Boonsboro High School Baseball Team, individuals Dalton Shank. TJ Calliger. Trenton Von Felk. Zach Holder. Josh DeRocher. Jake Neff. Colton Bear. Cole Ronhardt. Camden Day. Benjamin Berger. Peyton Mason. Adam Mathias. Ryan Nolan. Brendan Kemp. Michael Foda. Jacob Humble. Brock Smith. Aaron Hardl. Aaron Myers. Zachary Taylor. Assistant coaches, Don Quail. Troy Verstappen, guys. Darren Stottermeyer. Mike Nolan. Steve Gordon. And head coach, Steve Mason. As I said, they played in a very tough conference. They did a very good job. Coach Mason is in his first year, so he's batting a thousand right now. Coach, we expect this again next year. And we talked about them being student athletes, this team had a team GPA of 3.41.
President Williams, Vice President Stauffer, and Superintendent Dr. Michael, thank you for the privilege to represent our National Board Certified Teachers today. To announce this recognition, I would like to introduce Ms. Rebecca Shaw. Ms. Shaw is a lead teacher at Jonathan Hager Elementary School, and she currently serves as the Washington County Public School Liaison for National Board Certified Teachers at the Maryland State Park.
Today, Washington County Public Schools celebrates six new National Board Certified Teachers. These teachers join a growing community of Board Certified Teachers, now more than 118,000 strong across all 50 states, including 3,066 in the state of Maryland. Each of these accomplished educators earned the profession's highest mark of achievement through a rigorous, performance-based, peer-reviewed process, demonstrating their proven impact on student learning and achievement. This is not only a great personal accomplishment, it also has a direct impact on student learning, strengthening the schools and communities of Washington County Public Schools. Congratulations to the 2018 National Board Certified Teachers. At this point in time, in the presence of their principals, Mr. Matt Mariello and Dr. Terry Williamson, we would like to recognize each of them. Adrienne Bailey. Nicole Coteau. Virginia Durham. Amber Karkin. Jennifer Roberts. Carrie Ward.
Comments later in the program, but that completes our presentation for today. I look forward to June 19th. I think we have four staff presentations, we'll be honoring staff members at that meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. At this point in our meeting, we have the opportunity for comment from the public. We have no one signed up this evening. Is there anyone out there who would like to address the board at this time? Anyone who didn't have the opportunity to sign up in advance? We have no old business, so we'll move to new business. And our first item of consideration is the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teacher Association for the 2018-2019 school year. Hi, Mrs. Baker.
Good afternoon, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and the members of the board. I'm here today with Neil Becker, he is the Washington County Teachers Association President, and Mr. Jim Bowers, who is the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Vice President and the chief negotiator for ESPA. And we're here today for your consideration for the contract agreements between the Washington County Board of Education and both associations. First, we'd like to start with your consideration for the contract, contract agreement with the Washington County Teachers Association.
Is there a motion?
Then I move to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association for the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher, third second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion or any questions for Mrs. Baker or Mr. Becker? No, seeing none? All those in favor of approval of the contract between the Washington County Board of Ed and the Washington County Teachers Association for 2018-2019? Okay, we'll be unanimous. Student member concurs.
Thank you, board members. On behalf of Carlos Malat, who's not able to be with us this afternoon, he has a work obligation, I thank you for the opportunity to negotiate and come up with this agreement. I also, point of personal privilege, wish to thank you for advocating so strongly for a fully funded budget for our students and for our school system, seeing so many of you and the superintendent publicly advocating recently at the commissioner's hearing, spoke volumes about your commitment to public education and to our students, and I sincerely appreciate that, not only in my role here with the association, but more importantly, as a, as a parent with children in the system who, on a daily basis, interact with our teachers and support personnel and benefit from a, a strong, comprehensive public education. I truly thank you for advocating so strongly, and I hope that next year, we won't have to spend so much time and so much effort into getting funding for the school system that magically it will appear and we'll have everything we need for our students. So again, thank you. Thank you not only for our work here on the agreement, but for your work every day for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we ask you for consideration of the contract agreement with Washington County Educational Support Personnel.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions for Mr. Bowers or Mrs. Baker? All those in favor of approving the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2018-2019 school year? Are you unanimous? Student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to show my appreciation for everybody showing up at the board meeting. It was good to see the board there advocating for the system that you represent. It hasn't been done in a long time, so I do appreciate that. It started to scare me. It took a while to get a motion. I was worried.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Bowers, Mr. Becker, thank you. We look forward to working together with both employee groups coming school year. Thank you so much for all you do. Our second item of business, under new business, is our consent agenda. Mr. Bickford? Actually, I guess that would be our third, considering those as separate, one and two. This is number three.
Good afternoon, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Today, I have 19 items for your review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for award and staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you.
I'm going to drink water before I read this.
Madam President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for 17 school buses to American Bus Sales at a total cost of $1,665,972. The sale of up to 20 buses to the highest bidder utilizing govdeals.com and/or a request for quotation. Formative assessment system to School City Incorporated at a cost of $75,000. Building automation, energy management, and automated temperature control, annual maintenance extension to Control Systems, Inc. at a total cost of $228,500. Data warehousing, software maintenance and support services renewal to Who Knew It at a cost of $79,127. Athletic trainer services renewal to Pivot Physical Therapy at a total cost of $260,260.98. Library media content management software renewal to Library Video Company at a cost of $76,060. Library management system software renewal to Follett at a cost of $51,052.50. Annual maintenance of print center equipment to Canon Solutions America, Inc. at a cost of $147,874.16. Athletic surfacing systems maintenance and construction, Boonsboro High, six tennis courts to American Tennis Courts, Inc. at a total cost of $40,013.50. Maintenance and operations work order system renewal to Dude Solutions, Inc. at a cost of $50,528.26. Diagnostic and interim student assessments renewal to Centerport Education Solutions at a cost of $153,792.49. Educational technology management system subscription to Lee RN, or Learn, I guess, Learn, Inc. for $62,468. Microsoft licenses renewal to Bell Tech Logic at a cost of $423,856.91. Fountain Rock Elementary School Flooring to Carpet Gallery at a cost of $64,550 and unit price flooring to Carpet Gallery and Dorsey Brothers at unit prices listed. Zonar GPS system software renewal to Zonar Systems at a cost of $72,276.18. Electrical energy power generation with related parts, supplies, and services to Fidelity Power Systems at a cost of $95,179. Laptop computers to Dell, Inc. at a cost of $140,527.80. And technology education supplies and equipment to Amtech Company, Inc. at a total cost of
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Mr. Bickford or any discussion about this evening's consent agenda? No? Okay. And the motion is on approval of tonight's consent agenda as read so nicely by Mr. Bickford. All those in favor? All right. We're unanimous, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Bickford.
Thank you.
Our next item for consideration. We have our Director of Special Education, Dr. Jeffrey Gladhill, who's going to be talking with us about our application for federal funds for fiscal year 2019. Good evening.
Good afternoon, President Williams, members of the board. This year, we're here to hope that you accept the fiscal year 2019 local application for federal funds. We do it each year. It describes our process for how our funding has been. Just a summary of the changes. We have an increase of about 75 eligible students and a decrease of funding of about $3.21 per student. But the overall increase of funding, based on what we presented, was $128,862. As you may have noticed, it's important to note that our allocations change frequently. For example, when we presented it last year, we had three changes after that, and we already had a change in this year's allocation. So we kept the presentation based on what we presented in real life when we presented in the earlier years, just so the numbers would match if you looked at last year's presentation. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Other than that, I request approval of the grant.
Thank you, Dr. Gladhill. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the SFY 19 local application for federal funds.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Dr. Gladhill or any discussion? If not, then the motion is to approve SFY 19 local application for federal funds. All those in favor? We're unanimous. Student member concurs. Thank you, Dr. Gladhill. That brings us to... Good evening. So you're here to talk to us about our educational facilities master plan.
That is correct. Good afternoon, President Williams, elected board, Dr. Michael. We are here to seek the board's approval for the 2018 Educational Facilities Master Plan, the 10-year plan, which is up now, thank you, was presented to you at a public work session on May 22nd and includes continuation of the Sharpsburg and the downtown building projects, as well as three new elementary schools and various systemic renovation projects. So based on your concurrence at the work session to move forward, a draft master plan was presented to you in written form, and it was also posted on the website for public consumption. The plan presented, was also presented to the facilities enrollment advisory committee, and in your information package, there should be a letter that shows their concurrence with the plan. Each year, the master plan is used for the basis of, for the capital improvement plan, which will be presented for your approval later in the year, and upon a board approval, the plan will be sent to the Maryland Department of Planning on or before July 1st in accordance with state law. With that, we're pleased to bring this plan to you for your approval, and we look forward to any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the 2018 Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions or discussion about our plan? No? Okay. Then we'll move to the vote. Votes to approve the 2018 Educational Facilities Master Plan. All those in favor? We're unanimous. Student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen. And next, we have Mr. Brandon Berg, who's here to talk with us about the third quarter of FY 2018 budget adjustments. Good evening, or good afternoon, I guess it's still afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Williams, and board members, and Dr. Michael. As you know, on a quarterly basis, we bring requests for budget transfers across state-defined categories. These transfers result from our analysis, estimates, various director requests. The Finance Committee has reviewed these requests at its May 22nd meeting. The adjustments this quarter reflect additional revenues, realize some savings in some areas due to staff vacancies and turnover credit, and realize needs that we have in other areas. The net effect of these transfers on fund balance is zero, as in prior quarters of this fiscal year. Upon your approval, we'll present these category transfers to the county commissioners. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the board's finances and budget adjustments on the document before you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed modifications to the Board of Education's FY 2019 general fund budget.
Eighteen.
Nope.
That's the wrong motion.
For the third quarter budget adjustment.
That's okay.
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed FY 2018's third quarter budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Questions for Mr. Brandon Berg? Any discussion? The motion is to approve the proposed fiscal year 2018 third quarter budget adjustments. All those in favor? We're unanimous. Student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Brandon Berg. Next, we have Dr. Pugh, who is going to be speaking with us about the 2018-2019 middle school program, I'm sorry, middle school, something new, Middle School Program of Studies. Good afternoon.
That's correct. Good afternoon, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. We're here today to ask your approval for the very first ever Middle School Program of Studies. With me is Kate Wong. She's our social studies content specialist for middle school. She and Amy Seiler, our middle school math content specialist, initially proposed this publication as a solution for us to meet the need to align our course offerings to what the accountability measures are now requiring in our new Every Student Succeeds Act. There were inconsistencies across schools in terms of what courses were offered, which created difficulty in us pulling consistent data to determine whether or not all students had access to and completion of what is now defined as a well-rounded curriculum at the middle school level. The Division of Curriculum moved forward with all middle school supervisors, content specialists, et cetera, to begin creating consistency through this first ever publication. It served several purposes. It provides a description of the available courses for parents and students. It defines what specialized programs and educational opportunities are available. It also provides clarity in the expectations for the course content between merit, magnet, and grade level. We wanted to provide transparency for stakeholders so that everyone could see the same expectations across our schools and increase our communication to ease transition into the middle schools, in addition to meeting the need for consistency in course titling and course scheduling and course coding. After identifying the need for a middle school program of studies, the process began this fall. We started this process by reviewing the existing course codes for accuracy and updating codes that were necessary for both this process. Specific descriptions were written for every course that was offered. We did that throughout the winter, and in the spring, we met with administrators, supervisors, content specialists, and some teachers to review the first draft of the Middle School Program of Studies and collect feedback. Throughout this feedback process, we were able to finalize course descriptions and review those within the Curriculum and Instruction Committee on the May 22nd meeting date. Supervisors began with a very basic approach, understanding that this book could grow and hold additional information in the future. We'd hope to provide a clear description of what students could expect in their coursework. You'll notice that it has a very similar structure to what our high school program of studies is, with a simple table of contents outlining each of the content areas. In order to maintain that semblance with the high school program of studies, the book is structured in a very similar format. Each course description, or each content has their own descriptor page to begin their section, and on that section, what you would find is a brief description of what that content entails, and you would also locate a course pathway which identifies a recommended course sequence at the middle school level. For each course type, this is included. You would also include course descriptions for every course offered at the middle school level. This explains the grade level and identifies the differences between merit and magnet courses as well. Included in this section for each available course is a scheduling code, which can include SM or codes such as MG for magnet or semesterized courses. Information is also available about grade level, potential credits, and prerequisites if they apply to each specific course. So for our next steps, we're bringing this final draft to you for approval, so that this publication can be provided to our middle schools, and schools and families can use that to provide consistency in both scheduling and communicating to families. Even today, we've received some minor edits in terms of where sentences are placed and where a period is missing. So if you have those, we can take those afterwards, but if you have any other questions, we're happy to take those now.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the, I'm sorry. I move to approve the 2018-2019 Middle School Program of Studies.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford?
No.
No? Oh, Mr. Ridner. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear from where the voice came. Thank you, Mr. Ridner. Any discussion, any questions for Dr. Pugh? Mr. Ridner?
Very quickly, yeah, we went through this, and I support it wholeheartedly, but I do want to reiterate my issues with world languages and the fact that only one language at this time is receiving high school credit because it does have a damaging effect on the other languages. Kids are smart enough to recognize that, I got one, I've got one out of the way. So very seldom do they move on to another language. And I know that you've worked with North High, I think is the one, I think German or French, but those kids have, they don't have it in their own school. They have to move across and go there after school. So, you know, I do believe that hopefully we can do better at some point than being a one-language, because that's where it's moving, a one-language system. So I'm hopeful, but as of right now, that's not what's happening. Thank you.
Mrs. Murray?
Dr. Pugh, I'd just like to thank you and your staff for the hard work that you put into this. into this. I think it's a wonderful idea, the middle school program of studies. You did an excellent job helping kids transition from elementary school into middle school, and then they can go on into high school, and I think it's a great first step forward. So, thank you.
If there's no further discussion or any other questions, we'll move for approval of the 2018-19 Middle School Program of Studies. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous. Student member concurs. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. All right, that brings us to modifications to the fiscal year 2019 general fund budget. Mr. Prue, good afternoon.
Thank you, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael, and staff. It's here today to obtain your approval of modifications to the FY 2019 general fund operating budget. As you are aware, you submitted your approval of the budget on February 6, 2018. Subsequently to that, Washington County Public Schools, through the work of the Governor's Office, specifically in coordination with former Senator Kraschank, Senator Sarafini, we were able to receive an additional appropriation, through a supplemental budget appropriation by the Governor's Office. As you also are aware, last week, the Board of County Commissioners approved their budget, which included a value of $230,000 above maintenance of effort. Staff has reviewed the modifications to the budget with the Finance Committee, as well as how to spend additional funds that are now available in your budget, and how to allocate those appropriately. We are pleased to announce that through the additional appropriations, we can fully fund pre-K programs in every elementary school, so that we will have a pre-K program in every elementary school during the FY 19 year. We're also filling some roles that are identified, for instance, a mental health coordinator identified under Senate Bill 1265 relating to school safety and security, as well as a few other positions of need that we've identified through the budget process with you. With that, Mr. Brandon Berg and I are happy to accept any questions that you may have on the modifications.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed modifications to the Board of Education's FY 2019 general fund budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Questions for Mr. Prue? Mr. Brandon Berg, any discussion?
Any comments I would make, just as the Chair of the Budget Committee, or Finance Committee, is to publicly thank Senator Sarafini for helping us to identify and secure this additional funding, so that we are full, fully funded.
Okay, the vote is on our approval of the proposed modifications to our fiscal year 2019 general fund budget. All those in favor? We're unanimous. Student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen. And that brings us to the second half of the superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you.
Dr. Michael.
Mrs. Williams, I'm glad our students stayed. Normally, our students leave after they share the pledge. In addition to our elementary, middle, and high school summer school programs, we're excited to announce our second year of our extended learning program, primarily focused on reading. Students can read books, they can read hardcover books, they can read books online on their iPads that can be checked out for the summer. Very excited, the staff has come up with a very creative poster inside of a flyer, and we're encouraging students to read books. Every pre-K through eighth grade student will get a copy of this. We'll also make them available at high school. I'm sure Chris is going to want one for his summer reading program. What we're asking students to do is they read books, a parent reads a book to them, or they read a book, to color in or fill in the name of the book, and then we'll collect these at the end of the summer from students, and we'll have some prizes and some incentives. So it's a way of tracking the books, maybe put it up on the refrigerator, put it up on a prominent place in your house, and just encourage parents and students to read, read, and read. Research over and over and over again. There's yet to be a substitute for how much you can learn from reading, the opportunities that being a, reading well can produce for you in the future, in your current situation, and other subject areas, science, math, fiction, nonfiction, reading. We just encourage students to read, read, and read. So we're excited about that poster, and the program, and all the work that's gone into it. Dr. Haneck, Laura Hanks, many other people have put a lot of effort into our extended program. We do have a short video we're going to show. It's a couple minutes long, it's a little kickoff to our summer extended program, then I'll have a couple more comments after that. So staff, would roll that video?
music, and learning opportunities. For parents and students, sifting through this ocean of digital content to find quality educational material can be difficult. That's why Washington County Public Schools has created the Extended Learning Program. This program gives students access to a digital library of eBooks that are categorized by reading level, to meet each student right where he or she is, and allow for progressive learning. Just head over to WCPSMD.com and click on the iParent portal icon. Next, click on the Extended Learning Resources icon. Sign into Google with your WCPS email address, select the book list that matches your reading level, look for a book that catches your eye, and begin reading. Students from kindergarten through 12th grade can access this content anytime, anywhere, on any device. If an iPad is your preferred method, be sure to pick one up before the school year ends, or contact your upcoming homeschool for iPad pickup dates. Any student who is transferring schools, including 6th and 9th graders, should pick up their iPad at the school in which they will be attending in the upcoming school year. Before picking up an iPad, students grades K through 2 are required to pay $10 for eye coverage, which covers them through summer. At the end of summer, they will return their iPad to their homeschool. Students grades 3 through 12 are required to pay $15 for eye coverage, which covers them through summer and the upcoming school year. But the Extended Learning Program doesn't end with eBooks. Students also have access to the Washington County Free Library, simply by entering the letters R-A-I-L, followed by their student ID. Visit the library or Bookmobile to check out up to three printed items with no fines, or visit their website at washcolibrary.org to download eBooks, audiobooks, digital magazines, and more. Thanks to partnerships with the Education Foundation, our meal machine, and the local library, those who participate in the Extended Learning Program with their iPad will have the opportunity to participate in reading challenges and earn a variety of incentives. Please contact your homeschool for the 2018-2019 school year, to secure your iPad for the summer, and join in the fun.
So we're very excited about our Extended Learning Program. We'll continue to refine that, make that available to students, and look forward to how we can make it even more successful in the coming summers. But again, I would just encourage parents and students, read, read, and read. Parents even of, you know, late elementary, middle school, it's still a great thing to read with your child, have them read to you, or you can read to them, especially a book that might be too difficult to them. They'd get an opportunity to hear vocabulary and other information that'll kind of broaden their experiences, which will help them in the future with comprehension. Shifting gears a little bit, extended hours will change here for the central office and for schools, starting the week of June 18th. So that'll be the day before our next board meeting. Generally, schools are open 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. We are always open here Monday through Thursday. Sometimes schools, especially small schools, may or may not be open every day, depending upon if they only have a principal and a secretary. Sometimes it's difficult, but they will post hours on their doors if for any reason they're at meetings, or professional development, or unavailable based on vacation. So just wanted the public to be aware of that. We'll probably announce that again in upcoming information about our summer hours. Also tomorrow, we're teaming up with HCC. Robin Haller's been working hard on a program for our 7th graders to have a career opportunity. Greater Hagerstown Chamber of Commerce, been our partners. This is kind of in place of our 8th grade day on the job that's kind of outused its usefulness in a lot of ways, but every 7th grader's going to visit HCC. We have a lot of participants from the Chamber and from Greater Hagerstown that'll be there to share experiences with our students. And we're very excited about this first kickoff of this event. We hope it'll be the first year of many to come. I'd like to extend my best wishes to our seniors. We've had a few graduations, but tonight, we kick it off in earnest with Barbara Ingram and Tech High graduations, and then Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, I know many of us are involved every night or several nights in graduations, and we wish our seniors all the best. We hope that we've done well in preparing you for your future. I know many of our seniors have worked hard and have prepared themselves with or without us, I think, and Ibrahim's probably one of those students we can look at. But I wish them the very best of luck, and be safe, and hope you have a great career or future, and whatever you pursue, college, work, whatever that might be. And to our students, underclassmen, we're obviously still in school till next Friday. We're going to continue to work hard. Our staff's working hard, have been out in schools yesterday and this morning. A lot of good activities going on, obviously award ceremonies, and a lot of end-of-year celebrations, but also a lot of instruction that we intend to keep up until next Friday, and we'll wish them the best for the summer. And that's all that I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We have an action item. Mr. Trotta?
Thank you, good evening. I'm requesting the Board of Education's consideration of Decision and Order 2018-02. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt Decision and Order 2018-002.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any questions for Mr. Trotta? All those in favor of adoption of the Decision and Order 2018-002? Okay, we're unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Brings us to Personnel Action with Dr. Bishop. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to accept Personnel Record.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. All those in favor of approving Personnel Actions as presented in closed session earlier today? Okay, four opposed. One, two.
One abstention.
One abstention. Motion carries.
Mrs. Williams, if I might, I'd like to point out two principal appointments today. Williamsburg Elementary, new principal there will be Rhonda Smith, and returning to Washington County after I'll leave. So Funkstown Elementary School will be Megan Dodds. We wish them well, and we're pleased to announce their principalships this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to committee reports. Mr. Ridenhour, would you like to begin?
Yes, excuse me. The HR Committee is scheduled to meet June 28th. We will have a determination after I speak with Mrs. Baker about whether or not that will be necessary.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher.
Policy Committee. Has not met since our last business meeting. However, we do have a meeting scheduled for June 27th at 9:15.
Thank you. Mr. Gassford?
Yes, so the Facilities Committee met this morning. We had reviewed the Hagerstown Urban Revitalization Project. It is on track. Sharpsburg Elementary Replacement Project, the Security Vestibles. Mark Mills gave a report on the water testing that we will bring forth to the board soon, and just updates on some proposed developments in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
Finance Committee has not met since the last board meeting. We are scheduled to meet in August, on Tuesday, August 28th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford? Mrs. Murray?
Curriculum Instruction will meet on June 26th at 10:30.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Diallo?
Our county student government had our last meeting last Wednesday on May 30th. We capped off the year, and we elected our new officers and finished writing our Constitution, which was a long, long process.
Thank you.
Not as long as the first one. Not as long as that one.
Next on our agenda, miscellaneous business, and under that, we have future agenda items. You have a list of future agenda items in your packet. We have Health Education K-12 Review coming up at our next June meeting. In July, we'll have reports on discipline in school suspension and out-of-school suspension. Also, that same evening, July 17th, and we have one meeting in July, as a reminder to my colleagues, and that is Tuesday, July 17th. There will also be an update on autism life skills and summit programs. If you have any suggestions for future agenda items, please let, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. That would be Dr. Michael, Mr. Stauffer, or me. Thank you. Before we move to board member comments, I have a presentation that I would like to make this evening. Our student rep has one remaining board meeting to attend, and that's a few weeks from now, but we didn't want to risk missing an opportunity to recognize him, and so chose him this evening to recognize Mr. Diallo for his service to Washington County Public Schools. And I have for you, Ibrahim, a plaque, and it has this beautiful picture on it. Handsome young man here. And it says, "Presented to Ibrahim Diallo in recognition of your outstanding service as student member of the Washington County Board, School Board, excuse me, July 2017 through June 2018, Washington County Board of Education." Thank you for the fine service. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. It was great working with you guys.
I'm Carrie. We'll get a photo after the meeting. I'm sure my colleagues would like to congratulate you now. I'd just like to say what a pleasure it's been to serve with Mr. Diallo. He's been very conscientious. It's been a pleasure having him at work sessions, board meetings. Wish you all the best, and don't miss our next meeting. I'll be sad if you do. Okay, so that brings us to board member comments. Would you like to start down there, Mrs. Murray? And then we'll come back to Mr. Diallo.
I would just like to say that I was at their student council meeting for a short time, and enjoyed it, and listened to him speak, and we both told Chris that he had some big shoes to fill, so. Where is he? Hey.
Setting up.
Setting it up. Good job. So, but we were looking forward to having Chris join us. And I know we've all been busy these past few weeks. It's been very enjoyable going around to the different schools, the different awards ceremonies, and seeing everybody, and congratulating everyone on their accomplishments. It's been great. That's all.
As liaison to the Barbara Ingram Foundation, I want to thank my board member, fellow board members, and Dr. Michael for attending the rededication of the school. It's the start of honoring the 10 years that the school's been in service. It was, Mr. Ridenhour gave a fantastic history of the school, of where it's been, and I think it was a very excellent day. The portrait of Barbara Ingram will now be hung in the The portrait of Barbara Ingram will now be hung in the stairs so that the students see who the school is named after each day that they have to climb those stairs. So hopefully that's a good thing. And I know that the Groh family was very touched by, as well as Superintendent Betty Morgan, that they were honored. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mr. Stauffer.
Want to be there?
Yep.
I just want to say I've enjoyed working with Ibrahim. I kidded him a lot this year about coming to board things and missing school and used to tell him he'd do anything to miss class. He kept up with everything. I've attended various functions, but one of the things that I went with the other evening was the evening high school Antietam Academy graduation. And I'm going to tell you, some of the three speakers, especially the first young lady, her story is something, what she has gone through to graduate from high school, and she finished with a 3.6. I mean, it's -- that's quite a story for her to endure and go through and keep focused to graduate. Hers is quite a success story. And I hope all those students keep succeeding in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Gessler.
Yes, I attended the Marshall Street graduation where I spoke. I attended the Family Center Learning graduation. Today, I'll be speaking for Tech High out at the HCC ARC. And I'd like to thank all of our teachers, our support staff, for a wonderful year. I know you have a few more days left, but I hope you have a very enjoyable summer and get some rest.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher.
I had the opportunity for the first time, amazingly, considering how many years I've served on the board, to attend the graduation of those who completed their schooling at the family center. And I found it to be a very heartwarming experience. Those young ladies, and this year, there was one gentleman also, really take on a lot of responsibility in trying to complete their education, to raise their new young child. And many of them also were working a job at the same time. So I'm glad I took the opportunity to attend that event. It was very nice.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Reidenauer.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Two things, very quickly, which I thought was kind of interesting. A friend of mine, he is the photography instructor at Barbara Ingram. He was doing lessons on how to, basically how to do commercial photography. So he went over to a local restaurant, 28 South, and the owner, Mr. Zuspan, is that how you say it?
Yeah.
Mr. Zuspan had cooked up specials, and they were learning how, you know, photography plays such an important part in promoting what you're feeding your customers. So he cooked up a bunch of specials. Kids took their time and took the pictures, learned the lesson, and then he gave them the food. It was really kind of a neat opportunity for them because I saw the pictures and it looked pretty tag-along good. And nothing went to waste, I can guarantee you that. So that, I thought, I just wanted to thank him for taking that position and offering our kids, you know, that opportunity. And secondly, yeah, I appreciate Mr. Bickford mentioning about the rededication. It was a very nice ceremony. I was tickled to be a part of it. But let me tell you something, when you're trying to put 10 years of things that have happened in a school into three minutes, when you're finished, you feel like you butchered everything. And that's how I felt. But it was a -- it was a wonderful, wonderful program. I know that the family was incredibly touched by this, and I think it was well thought out. And I appreciate everything that went into that, so thank you.
Mr. Diallo? We'll come back to you.
Give me time to prepare a speech or anything. I'm glad that I had this experience. It's really been a trip, running as a timid junior and stuttering throughout my speech and making it to this point after all the work sessions, the committee meetings, missing school, of course, and being here almost every night. I loved it. And Erica last year told me, you know, I had a lot to do, and I was scared. I was scared timid, not going to lie. But I mean, I think I made her proud at least, and I tried my best, and I loved doing this. And I wish Chris the best, and I do this for my mom. So thank you. Thank you for everything, each and every one of you. You guys have put up with me each and every day, and I feel like I've gotten to know each and every one of you guys as -- thank you.
Thank you.
And you're going where? Did you sign on a college?
To the University of Southern California.
Okay.
Oh, and to Mr. Stauffer's point, I missed a lot of school, but I averaged As in all my classes.
I know you did. I kept tabs on you with Mr. Alshardt.
I have no comment this evening. I'll keep my comments for our next meeting. And with that, we'll adjourn. Meeting adjourned. Ibrahim, have a box for your --